Welcome to the 16th meeting of fiscal year 2013 of the Milton Planning Board. I'm Alex Whiteside, the chairman, and with me are...
Emily Ennis, member.
Ed Duffy, member.
Michael Kelly, member.
William Clark, planning director.
Jean Peterson, for...
Mr. Lynch is not here, and I should say that his wife of, I think, 37 years...
Fifty-six.
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 Fifty-six years. Marion Lynch died this week, and the board offers its condolences to Bernie and to his family. And we look forward to having him back with us in February. Now, we're going to meet on February 14th, and then we're going to meet again on February 28th. And for some reason, we're scheduled in the Carol Blute conference room, whereas we should be in the John Cronin conference room, shouldn't we?
As long as the selectmen aren't meeting there, and as long as we have no major public hearings, I will take every attempt to get you back there.
All right. Okay. Although it is soothing here in the Carol Blute conference room. Now, we're going to do the minutes. I hope.
We have four sets, one that we will defer until Bernie gets back, and then we have the minutes of December 13th, December 27th, and January 10th.
Exactly right. And the 13th looks to me to be perfect.
I have a question, though.
Yes.
The bottom paragraph starts with Kenneth Cochran's...
Yeah.
Yes.
And it says, "Tim Kernan," is that his correct spelling?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, it looks perfect.
It does look so good.
All right. So, shall we have a motion to approve these?
Move to approve the minutes of December 13th, 2012.
Second.
And the second, and all in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now we go to the...
December 27th.
December 27th, December 27th. And I have read these, and the only thing that I think that we should change is in the last paragraph where Paul Sullivan addressed the board, and I'd say Paul Sullivan addressed the board relative to a proposal for overlay zoning to apply to the site of a present greenhouse at 591 Blue Hill Avenue.
Okay.
So with that change, I think that these minutes are great minutes.
The minutes of December 27th, you move...
As amended.
As amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Would you give this to Jean? Here's the change. Now, on January 10th, January 10th, we've got some...
More extensive.
Changes about the housing productive, the housing production plan. And what I think is we should say is Chairman Whiteside suggested that preparations begin for an RFP for a housing production plan. He stated the HPP must be acceptable to both the planning board and the board of selectmen. Member Ennis expressed a concern that the housing production plan process might interfere with the master plan visioning process. And then in the next one, I suggest that the first sentence read, "Developer Paul Sullivan addressed the board with an update on his overlay zoning proposal for the 591 Blue Hill Avenue site." And in the last sentence, I suggest we say Chairman Whiteside stated that neighborhood support would be important rather than is important. And finally, on 36 to 50 Elliott Street, I think we should just say the signing of the decision was postponed. I note that we are in the decision we're going to sign tonight, I hope. We are not going to do the Henry House. We're going to defer that for a future time. But with those changes, I think the minutes are fine.
I move that we approve the minutes of January 10th, as amended.
Second.
Okay. All in favor? Aye. Jean, here are the... All right. Now let's go to that decision.
Can we, while you're talking about, can you do, as you do administrative, can you do the report of the planning board?
Do we have it?
Oh, actually, I need to do that one. We get a year off, so because it's done for the previous year, this is the report for the year that I was chair.
This is...
So Alex would do next year's.
This is a report for 2012, and you were chairman, that's quite right, but you can you can take this.
It's wonderful.
You can take this and you can rework it to put in the fact that Chairman Ennis behaved magnificently throughout the fiscal year.
I think you might want to read it, because I think it came out wonderful.
I'm sure it's fabulous, and I may even just, you know, sign off on it perfectly.
All right. The only change I see on it is where it says Alexander Whiteside Chair. You might want to...
Right.
Change that.
That's about it.
Demote him temporarily until the following year.
Well, I think, no, I think that I'm still the chairman when this gets submitted, because even though it's for that fiscal year, the...
Well, then it's going to be interesting, because he submitted it for last year, and his name was on it, so I get left out in the cold if we submit it with your name.
All right. Well, we're going to check and see who is supposed to sign these.
Why don't we just put Chair, and we put in parentheses FY 2012?
We could do that. We could put them both.
I think, I like that.
Yes.
I like that.
Absolutely.
Chairman, now we'll call her a chairman.
I have no objection to chairman, never have.
Right, exactly. It's, yeah, it's like mankind.
It works.
It works.
Yes.
Ed.
Second paragraph, the last sentence, "The plan was derailed when the original developer..."
Yeah.
I would say the plan was stalled, and the original developer decided not to proceed.
I think that would be good. I took out the word happily, because I thought that that was...
It's still in there, though.
It is, but I was going to take it out and say, "But the plan is now going forward with a new developer."
I think I would look forward to reading these.
All right. Emily is going to put this together, and she is going to consult with the, the chairmen are going to consult together with...
Guess what?
With the, on the final report, unless Paula said that we can have till our next meeting.
You cannot. It goes to the printer next week.
Oh.
All right. So we want the board to authorize the chairman, chairmen, to put this thing together and to bed. Okay?
Fine.
Excellent.
All right. I, we have consensus. All right. Now, that was, that was pretty good, y'all. We came close. I know Emily is going to make improvements. This is going to be one of the greatest reports that we've ever submitted.
Wait, how many pages do we get?
She's going to cut the baby in half to make sure it lives.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay. The next thing is our site plan approval of 36 and 50 Elliott Street. And if you've, and we've got a A&R plan. We might start with the A&R plan.
Oh, yeah.
Is it, A&R's not on the agenda, are you just presenting it?
It's one of the...
It's 36...
They already approved it.
Okay.
Right.
All right.
Right.
Just making sure we've dotted our i's and crossed our t's.
And this plan, actually, we have seen, because we have been given copies of it before.
That's right, the older one, yeah.
Part of the file.
Yeah.
We have...
And what this does is, as you recall, the 50, 50 Elliott Street people own the two, two families and the Henry House.
Right.
And the rest of their lot for their new development is going to come from the Milton Hill Realty Trust. So they're going to give a portion of the Milton Hill House lot to the developer of the new, new building at 36, or at 50, at 50 Elliott.
Approximately 25,000 square feet.
Right, exactly.
It's being conveyed from one entity to the other.
So, but this is a step that Ned has advised us about for some time.
Yes.
And we have actually been given these plans several times in the past. So my suggestion is that people should look at the plan and ask any questions, and then we should authorize Mr. Clark to execute this plan as not requiring subdivision approval.
Ed, can you see it?
Well...
Turn some of you guys to the side.
This is not the building we approved, this is just the land transaction, correct?
This is, this is not, this is just the land transaction.
The land transaction, yes.
Yes.
Basically, what, what we're going to do is file, record that plan, and a deed with it, and then we'll record the variances in cycling and everywhere, and all of that will be done together, but there's a, there's a sequence to it that's important, and this is an important component. The deed will also...
They need to own the land.
That's right.
And in order to own the land, you need a plan.
Correct. And the deed will, the deed will also address issues of shared access and shared parking, because the parking spaces are shared across the combination of the two developments.
So, any questions?
Present.
All right. Then I would entertain a motion to authorize Mr. Clark to execute this plan, subdivision approval not required.
So moved.
Second.
All right. Discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So you have a unanimous vote there. The next is the site plan approval. As you recall, we voted site plan approval in December.
Yes.
Subject to a satisfactory written decision. And we were concerned about the Henry House back in December, and we're hoping to get better plans. And what we've decided to do is to defer the Henry House and the Carriage House, the site plan approval of those two items, and just do the 27-unit building in this decision. And if you look at it, the first couple of pages describe all the plans which are incorporated into this site plan approval. And on page three, you'll see that they're all referred to as the site plan approval documents. And I've shown you the latest renderings and the elevation detail which show the appearance of the, of the building and certain specifications. On page three, we have a paragraph about height, 45 feet above 69.4 feet, and this, Duffy, you are urged to think about if you've got a proper weather vane, and I think that we would deem it not to be included in the, in the height, but it would have to be a proper weather vane which would be in scale with the building. Yes?
Ned, we saw some renderings tonight. One shows a lot of roof, and I just think, because it's up high, the building is long, I, I think something was needed up, up top to catch the eye. And I think, this is just a suggestion, this is not a demand, but I think the Sullivan family wanted to have something made up distinctively, and the height would have to be, would have to be calculated by some testing perhaps, but something distinctive that'll catch your eye and become something of a landmark.
Okay.
And they don't have to do it, but I think it would be great to give the building a little touch of extra, extra attention.
I'll recommend that to the Sullivan family. I know that the architects will work, will be working more specifically on the design of the Carriage House and the Henry House, and will be back before the board some, some point early this spring with those renderings, and I'll have perhaps at the same time something that would, and if you have any suggestions about type of item that might want to go up, obviously would be...
Yeah, but we can talk off, it's not a demand, we can talk about it any time at all, but we will have some suggestions, Emily will have some, too.
Sure.
Okay.
See what the other fellows do.
On page three, we have a couple of, we have a paragraph on design of the buildings, the color of the roof, the mounds of the windows, the brick, the dance steps, the stonework, the lighting. There is a lighting plan that we've been provided. The 99 parking spaces, they're going to probably assign one of the spaces to each apartment and then, at any time, they've...
Most of the, most of the current, the 36 units in the Hill House, there are 36 cars. Generally, the apartment, the tenants are on one car.
The landscaping, if you recall, we were given a recent landscaping plan. I don't remember there being anything else. I think the landscape plan, landscaping, the planting plan, the landscape plan and the planting plan do show what we need. I've asked Bill about the drainage. Apparently, the, the big issue is that 12-inch pipe, Bill, that we reference here. You can see that we reference a new 12-inch drain pipe which will go to Morton Road and then discharge into Pine Tree Park pursuant to a notice of intent to be filed with the A construction management plan we've, to be worked out between the developer and the neighborhood and the Central Avenue Committee. The Henry Houses and the Carriage House are deferred, and then amended and recording. So I think it's ready to go.
It is a very nicely written site plan approval decision. Nice job.
Okay, Bill, shall we just sign our, our copies and pass them down?
Or do you have...
Or do you have some for us to sign?
Sign these.
These are the same as what we have?
I want to make sure, so I can give you three. And I've already written, I can erase some on top.
Okay.
I'll give you the blue pen to go with.
Well, thank you. Now, let's just see if the, the...
Draw on the last page.
No, I know that, but you see, you see, we've got, we have a different...
I know, that's why I gave you...
It's the same?
It's the same.
It's...
It's a different...
It's the same but different. Why is it different?
Find out when you give me the first one.
You're going, well, Emily has to sign it. I have a blue pen also, so you can give someone else. So we're going to discover why these are different.
Is it a different font size?
I don't know. I know, right now.
Moving line two, Mr. Secretary.
Thank you.
And after you've signed the next one of these, I might give it back to me, because I want to see if I can figure out why they're different, too.
Completing differences.
Is this the last one?
That's the last one.
Well, that's a difference.
The difference is the, it's yours.
Page one is...
You gave me after Jean.
But I gave back to Jean the final copy that she, she accepted all of the changes and sent it back to me.
The paragraph layout is different.
It's, it's up there, longer pages.
Right. They're, they're not, you, in yours, you took every paragraph and indented.
No, that was the first.
That was just the first?
Then she resubmitted, she resent, and I made some minor changes and...
All right, then sign the copies that you have.
We're going to sign...
And get rid of all the ones you just...
Well, no, just take, take, take this one, take, no, don't, don't, take the, that one, and we're going to sign the ones we have also.
Yep.
And we're going to figure out if they're the same or not.
They're not.
What is the difference?
Pagination.
Pagination?
There was, there were, this afternoon, this morning, this afternoon, there were a couple of back and forths with some...
I saw those coming across.
Very minor changes.
Okay.
And one of the issues was, was how the pages were being numbered.
Okay.
But these, these pages have more material. The ones we just signed have more material on them.
Yes, because, because when I sent one version back, Jean had, I think, had, had at the bottom of each page typed in the page number.
Yeah.
And I went in and inserted it as a footer.
Oh, yeah, that would make a difference.
So the footer is set lower on the page, and now you're right, and I deleted the typed in pages. And when she went back and did it the final form, she went back to her form without the number in the footer. So that's the difference, is where's the, where's the page number? But the language of the two is the same.
They're both the same.
The same.
So do you need it to be re-signed? Does it matter which page number it is?
Well, so the one we signed is fine.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We signed three.
The one that with, with Jean's numbers at the bottom, which have the two hash marks and...
Look, take a, take a look at this now.
Is the, is the correct one.
Okay, so the ones we have are the correct ones?
Yes.
All right. So we do need to...
So we're going to sign these.
What I think Bill did was I copied the version that I sent back.
Okay. So...
But not the one that Jean, the last version that Jean had there.
Okay. All right, so...
Jean's version is correct.
Is it this one upstairs, and this is the correct one upstairs?
No, they all got it. You gave it to them, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
All right, we're going to sign these.
The one that you have with the, with the double hash marks on the side of the number is the correct one.
With the double hash margin.
On this one, see how there's a...
When you use one...
A dash on either side.
All right. Okay. Okay. Grab your copies, people.
Bill's got mine, so I'll have to sign you guys'...
I have an extra.
We've got, we've got three of mine, so, yeah.
Just making sure you've got...
I think you need, you really need all of them.
You only need three.
Yes. Ed?
Yeah, Ian's getting tired while we're signing.
Johnny Powers, the clerk of the Supreme Judicial Court of Suffolk County, he spent all his time signing stuff, and he had to sign all the bar applicant's certificates.
So, were you the last in line?
He is, he is dead now.
Was it a smorgasbord?
No, it was, he had, he had a great signature.
Wow.
He's an old state senate president. And Ned, you've now got two versions.
I have the correct version.
All right.
But that will be recorded with the clerk tomorrow.
Excellent.
Which will then set the 20-day appeal period.
All right.
All right.
All right, Bill?
Yep.
The one with the little, is the correct one.
Yep.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy New Year.
Not at all.
I'll be back.
Well, thanks. Tonight?
Please, them or us, isn't it, tonight?
Not us, but tonight.
Okay. Are we all squared away there, Bill? Master plan update.
All right.
Moving right along.
Couple of things. The master plan committee has, I think, met right before our last meeting. We are getting ready for our public forum this Saturday at Tucker School at 9:00 a.m. We're ending at 12 o'clock. And tonight, we have with us Sue Brown of Brown Walker, and she's going to give us a presentation on what they've been doing so far, including the work of the master plan, and leading us into the public forum on Saturday. I should say that this is not our only public forum. We understand that many people aren't able to make Saturday mornings, so we will also have one in the evening in February. We're hoping for February 26th, we haven't got that confirmed yet, so I'll let you guys know as soon as I know. And then we will have a third and final public forum, and that's the one at which the results will be printed, presented, and the community will have a chance to give some feedback on the results, so. But Sue, welcome.
All right. I'm going to get out of the way.
Yes.
And...
And I need to wait for Bill anyway, because he's in charge of the electronics, so...
And he still has the cap on, so...
Yeah, maybe it's just a matter of taking the cap off. I've put together just a brief presentation. I understand we have about an hour. My presentation will not, certainly not take up that long, maybe 15 minutes or so with the information, but you're welcome to jump in at any time with any questions as I'm presenting it, so it doesn't need to be a presentation followed by questions. It can be intermixed, so...
Did I miss?
Just missed that we're waiting for you to, to power it up and turn it on.
Yes.
And we'll get started. Do we need the lights? Maybe just down a little bit.
Move this, a little bit.
Need something underneath it?
Move the closer to the screen.
Everyone okay to see that? Great. Okay.
Do, do they need the lights?
No.
Everybody okay with seeing that? You got, you just turn the lights on?
Is that okay?
All right.
Okay. All right, terrific. So, as I said, I understand we have about an hour, but this presentation does not take that long. We basically want to, as Emily said, let you know what we've been doing, what we've learned today, what we plan to do next, and feel free to jump in with any questions or comments as we're moving along. So this is what I just will briefly want to go over, the intent and process, what we've looked at for past studies, give a little bit of a community snapshot about your demographics, land use, et cetera, and then give you the results of the in-house survey that you and others were invited to take. So when we began our work with you, we outlined the intent of this planning process, and that's the list on the left. And the list on the right is really a summary of what we've accomplished... And the list on the right is really a summary of what we've accomplished to date. So, um, our focus has been on gaining an understanding of the town, its demographics, land uses, current trends, and also with some key stakeholders, namely the Planning Board, Board of Selectmen, and the Master Plan Committee, um, see what they feel are the town's challenges and opportunities. Um, our other focus has really been on getting the word out to as many people in the community as we can about the master planning effort. We want, um, community members to understand what a master plan is and how they can stay involved in the process, so. The next steps in the process following this evening is, um, our first public forum, as Emily said, is, um, this Saturday at the Tucker Elementary School. That's our first forum. Um, it's really about visioning, getting, um, asking the participants what they see as the future of Milton. Um, there will be three public forum, forums spaced about a month and apart and in different locations throughout town. Um, also following that, we'll be doing stakeholder interviews, um, targeting, targeting, um, large landowners and managers, department heads, committees and boards, um, the business community, open space and historic resource advocates and others. Um, following the second public forum, we'll submit a draft report, um, which will present a draft community vision, um, and goals and outline a preliminary set of key issues, so what people think are the primary issues that the town is facing. Um, following committee and board review and a public presentation at the third public meeting, um, and a final review, we'll make changes as needed and submit the final plan. And we'll also develop a presentation for town meeting. So I'm going to get started. For our initial research, we were directed to a number of studies. Um, I'm going, starting from back and coming forward. So in 2004, there was a, um, community development plan similar to a master plan, but, um, covering a little bit, um, less. It covered four issues and made recommendations pertaining to each. For natural resources, it recommended, um, updating the open space and recreation plan to prioritize protect parcels. And it recommended a number of zoning changes to protect open space, um, including a conservation and recreation district, a, um, greater use of cl- cluster zoning and an institutional district and regulations. For economic development, the focus was on redevelopment and rezoning, including areas where existing non-conforming cur- commercial uses existed. Um, and again, establishing, um, that also talked about establishing the institutional zoning overlay district. Um, housing, the focus was to increase leadership and capacity to address affordable housing, um, while maintaining community character. And in transportation, the primary recommendation was, um, implementing pedestrian and bicycle improvements. Jumping forward, one year, um, we looked at the, um, study that was done by the Urban Land Institute. Um, it, its focus was on the Central Avenue Business District, uh, 131 Elliott Street, um, 93 through 95 Elliott Street, and then 36 Central Avenue. And the goal here was to transform the existing commercial core into a destination, location, and a community, um, focal point. And the recommendations of that, um, study were, um, increase multi-use development, um, invest in the public realm, um, streetscape, bike paths, parks, and to promote transit, um, architectural character, um, and the Menoponset River. Following that came your Affordable Housing Plan in 2006. Um, this is a plan, as you know, is recommended tool for meeting the state's, um, 10% mandate for affordable housing and it's also a requirement, uh, for receiving certification, certification of compliance, which allows the town to deny a 40B if it, um, if it's in, if it is not in compliance with the town zoning. Um, the town also, of course, has to show that it's increasing housing to the tune of one-half percent, um, in affordable housing over a year or 1% over two years, um, to get that, um, certification, but the housing plan has to be in effect as well. Um, recommendations coming out of this plan was to, um, adopt inclusionary zoning, amend accessory apartment bylaw, waive permit fees and streamline the permit approval for affordable housing. Also to allow affordable housing under cluster zoning on non-conforming, um, lots and as a reuse option. It also suggested reducing parking requirements. Um, it also recommended ways to increase the town's capacity to address affordable housing, which included, um, adding an assistant planner, um, creating an affordable housing trust and approving the CPA. Um, finally, it also focused on education, um, recommending campaigns and, um, summits to eliminate fears and negative perceptions, um, and highlight community needs. And I understand that you're looking at these issues again. In 2007, there was an essay that was done entitled "One Plan, One Community." That focused on four sites, the DPW Yard, the Milton Center LLC site on Randolph, near, abutting the Granite Links, um, Ashley Place Meg Lane, which is the unbuilt subdivision near the DPW, and, um, Town Farm. Um, and this essay gave some background and noted trends in recent activities or interest in these, um, four sites. And some of these recommendations included negotiating a mixed-use development with Milton Center LLC for Randolph Avenue Corridor, um, consolidating Central and East Milton Fire Stations at the DPW site, um, converting Central Station into a Town Hall Annex, um, and transferring development rights from Town Farm to Milton Center LLC site. And I'm not sure, um, if any of these ideas have moved forward, but those are some that came out of that somewhat recent study. In 2009, a community survey, we looked at the community survey results. Um, there were 693 responses to this survey that asked, um, queried the public on a number of issues. Um, overall, results showed general satisfaction with the community. Whoops, I'm sorry. We go forward there for you. Um, a few items receiving support from a clear majority included improving or replacing the fire stations and the DPW Yard's offices, also implementing pedestrian and cycle transit improvements. Um, there was less consensus overall, um, on zoning and economic development issues. Um, there was general agreement, but not support for housing other than, um, single family. And the two issues that respondents to that survey that were, they were least concerned with were housing and transportation overall. So that just kind of, um, was a litmus test of what people were, um, interested in and what they were most concerned with. The most recent study that we looked at was the 2011 East Milton Square Parking and Access Study. Um, the overriding goals were to strengthen the connections from east and west, to address the perception that, um, there was insufficient parking, um, respect town character, improve bicycle and pedestrian access, and ensure that cut-through traffic wasn't, um, worsened. So the recommendations that came out of this study were to institute curbside management, uh, meters, a wayfinding plan and pedestrian circulation improvements, to install a roundabout, um, to rezone Basset Street as commercial between Granite and Franklin, um, apply a mixed-use overlay on Mechanic Street, um, and narrow Granite Ave and reclaim the space, um, for a mixed-use path to connect the square to the Menoponset River Greenway. So, um, with that, um, history in mind, then, then we took a look at some of Milton's demographics. These are probably not new to you, but they might provide some information and some base file, information for the, for other folks. But basically, we found that your population, um, is growing at about 3.6% over the last census, which was similar, um, or slightly higher than the statewide average of 3.1. The largest increase was within your 55 to 64 age group. The largest decrease, um, was the 25 to 44 age group. Housing costs continue to rise. Your median cost is nearly 500,000 now. Your rent, um, this was in 2010, your median rent was up to over 1,200. 82% of your, um, housing is owner occupied and 4.4% is deemed affordable, meaning it's on the subsidized housing inventory, um, for, that the state, um, says is affordable. Um, and of course, you know, the state is looking for 10%. Your households are primarily family. 38% have children under 18. A third of your, um, households have seniors over 65 and nearly a quarter of all the households in, um, Milton are people living alone. Um, just a little bit more on your community snapshot. Um, household incomes are up and today the median income is over 100,000. 5% of your residents earn less than 25,000. The majority earn between 100 and 200,000 and a quarter earn over 200,000. Your top employers in town, healthcare and education. Your tax base is 97% residential, um, and it's unlikely to change, given that less than a half of 1% of your land is zoned for, um, commercial activity. Um, and, uh, the good news is that over a quarter of your land is permanently protected open space. So the last thing, and here there might be some things that you don't know because this is a survey that we just completed. Um, this survey was given to the Master Plan Committee, the Board of Selectmen and the Planning Board. And this is just kind of a highlighting some of the things that we found out. There are some themes that emerged from the first question, asking what are Milton's characteristics? And these are some of the answers that we got. Some of the things that we were a little, didn't know would come out of it, um, lacks a visual and functional town center. Others, um, I think that we were apparent. Here are some areas of agreement and some areas of divide. Um, most agree there's a need for more diversity of commercial offerings. There, however, there's a wide variety of opinions on housing types needed among, in this group. Um, preserving character is important across the boards. However, there's a real divide in opinion over affordable housing. Um, and there's general consensus about the need to create recreational offerings, even though, um, the open spaces themselves, people were very satisfied with the amount and diversity of open space. These are the elements that these respondents, um, felt in Milton were listed as important to protect. So your scale and diversity and quality of your schools and public services, knowing your character, and involve citizenry. And these are some of the ideas about what, um, folks on these boards and committees felt needed to change. So a great, um, diversity there. And I'd just like to leave this up for you to cons, to consider. Um, and this wraps up the formal presentation, so I would be happy to answer any questions that you might have about either the process as it's going forward, what we're doing, how we're doing it, um, and also about anything that has come out of this survey or, um, anything else that's here that you would like some answers on, so. Stop looking at that. Any surprises? Um, any thoughts? Suggestions?
Once we turn this off, Bill, I'm going to, uh, move to my microphone.
Oh, there you go.
The one thought I have is that the Affordable Housing Plan would be useful in preparing a housing production plan, but it was never, uh, it was never formally endorsed by the, it was accepted by the selectmen, but it wasn't approved by the selectmen or the planning board. And so it's, it's, it's not a housing production plan. It is an, uh, do you recall what the, uh, where the impetus for the Affordable Housing Plan came from, Bill? What the program was that, that got us to do it? It wasn't, it was a state program that, that, that wanted one of these.
Yes.
And it's, uh, it's full of, it's full of interesting stuff. It just isn't a housing production plan.
That's right, that's right. So it's not a, it wasn't approved by the state because it needs to be approved by your, um, your town leaders in order to be that and then, um, so it doesn't qualify as what they need to, um, give you certification.
And the, uh, the, the areas that it suggests might be developed, it was, there was no formal, since it wasn't going to be approved, it was just going to be accepted, the, uh, uh, the designations of possibilities were just that.
Yes.
Possibilities, but not, uh, not specific directions authorized by either the selectmen or the planning board.
Understood.
There were goals rather than specific action.
Oh, they were just possibilities. I mean, they weren't even goals. They were, uh, uh, I mean, there, there were specific sites mentioned, but, uh, it wasn't.
Vetted, maybe.
What?
Properly vetted.
It wasn't, it was, they weren't vetted. They, they really weren't vetted. They were just put in as possibilities.
And I understand that you're looking at putting out an RFP for an actual housing production plan currently.
And, and the Affordable Housing Plan would be very useful because a lot of those, uh, the, the things like, uh, in-law apartments and, and cluster and, uh, zoning changes to, uh, promote affordable housing in the Affordable Housing Plan are, are the sort of thing that the Housing Production Plan would, uh, would have in it also. So it, it, it is a, a big step. There's a lot in it that is, is going to be useful.
There is, yes.
Um, just a, a couple of notes on the historical documents. Um, the "One Plan, One Community" was written in partially in response to a proposal that had been made for the DPW Yard that was later, um, turned down and generated a lot of comment. So you should be aware that there were people very strongly on both, on either side, uh, or multiple sides of that particular, um, item. And in some ways, a little bit of that was going on, I believe, when the CDP was being done in 2004. And so some of what you get out of the CDP may be informed by that. In fact, even the community survey in 2009, there was some response still to that DPW proposal. And also there was some response that you should understand in light of the Temple proposal that was going on during the community survey. So just to give you some extra historic background as to what's going on with that. Um, it doesn't negate necessarily what's going on with any of the plans, but it might provide some background to some of the comments you see in there. Again, on all sides of the various, um, things. One of the thing that's been interesting for all of us is proposals that come up and then hearing how people feel. We, we get a sense of how people feel about specific issues, uh, because of the proposals that have come forward, but not to date anything that's necessarily global, which is one of the reasons we really wanted to do this visioning process. It's hard for us to plan or react to proposals that are brought forward when we haven't gotten a sense of the direction of the town in general, so.
Yeah, we're, we're very excited about doing the, um, visioning on Saturday and hopefully it will, you know, give you a good idea of what at least the people that were attending, um, would like to see. So we're hoping for a good, we're hoping for a good turnout.
The snow make it interesting.
I hear it's just a dusting. I hear it's just a dusting.
They kind of make up their minds earlier this week.
If we were on live TV, we'd ask you to, uh, describe what's going to happen on Saturday, but unfortunately, this is not going to be broadcast until after.
After the event.
Well, actually, I guess it will be, uh, on Friday at 10.
Friday night at 10, so. Yeah, give, give us a quick smash.
You might, you might give us a quick overview.
Sure, sure. Well, it's, it's. Well, it's, it's about visioning, so it's about imagining what the future could be for Milton. And what we've designed is a number of discussion and mapping activities that have, will ask for people input about what makes their communities, what makes their particular neighborhood strong, what, what may be lacking in some neighborhoods, what might need to be changed. So we're really trying to figure out what people value here in Milton, in their particular neighborhoods and other neighborhoods that they see as part of Milton, and how they can make sure that every neighborhood in Milton, you know, fits the standard that, that they have, so that, you know, it's really a global goodness in Milton. So we look for it to be pretty active and visioning, you know.
And it's at the Tucker School?
It's at the Tucker School at 9:00 AM till about noon. We'll have light refreshments, and we're really hoping for some engaged folks. We've done a lot of outreach. We feel like we have sent some, I heard Emily say she's heard from people who have gotten multiple invitations. So, and we've done some very targeted outreach as well as the general outreach, so hopefully we'll have a good.
And it's been a multiple method. So we've had flyers go out, we've had the media, we've had emails, both formal and asking people to email all their friends and contacts. We've had flyers posted as well, so we had an announcement go out through the schools. So it's been reaching a lot of people in town. And again, because we know some people can't make a Saturday morning and some people can't make an evening, we're doing one on Saturday, we'll do one on that evening in February, February 26th, so.
Yeah, at the Cunningham Hall.
And that has been confirmed?
Cunningham Hall.
Excellent, Cunningham Hall.
So one month from.
Yeah. It also gives us some geographic diversity as well, so that people don't.
And I should say, we're not, we won't be doing the same thing at each meeting, because it needs to be a little bit iterative. What we hear tonight, we will be sending back out there at the February 26 meeting to say, here's what we heard, do we have it right, and do you have more to offer? So it's not, it won't be the exact same thing, but there will be three different formal public events that we'll, we'll be able to present and get feedback, you know, back and forth, and they will be in different places and different times, so.
Now, I appeared before the warrant committee last night, and they were mulling over how much to fund a master plan with, and they said it was going to be very useful to get a report from your committee prior, as much prior to town meeting as possible, so that they can, they can mull it over.
I'd be happy to give them that information anytime they ask.
Well, you should, you should.
Am I considering myself asked?
Make sure, yes.
You were asked to appear February 9th at the all-day meeting.
I will put that in my calendar.
But I think that beyond that, you should schedule a session with the warrant committee on, once the plan is either in draft or in final.
That will be, the draft plan won't come until after they come, go to press, but I have some information already that I can give to them.
But it, this is simply that they'll, they'll do the best they can, but they want to, they want to know how the visioning, what the results are before committing. In other words, they'll make a recommendation, but they may change it.
We'll have those results from the second forum before they go to press, looking at your timeline, so we'll be able to give them something. It won't be the full draft report, but we will be able to give them the information I need, and the same here for us.
I heard the methods of outreach, but I didn't, and the reason I asked the question is I didn't see any. When you say you emailed it, how did you develop an email list?
Well, we have several, for several ways. You shouldn't, and I have actually.
Well, I received the survey.
Oh, good.
But I didn't receive anything about the Tucker School meeting and.
Okay, good, because I have here some bounce backs, so that means we have some, so I will give that, if you'll pass that down to Emily.
I'll have a look at those.
There are two, we have several methods for getting the email out. Emily provided me with about a 400 Constant Contact list, so that's a list of her contacts, and I know it included a lot of board members and committee members. We also, Bill, sent it out to all the town meeting reps. We couldn't send it directly to them, because the town clerk promised that she wouldn't give away their email list, but that.
Town meeting members?
If we, town meeting member reps. Are you also one of those?
Let's check with her.
No, no, I'm a town meeting member, and I didn't, again, I didn't receive an email as a result.
Maybe you have a faulty email.
Did you fill out the form that the town clerk had sent out a form to everybody, like past fall, so that's where she's collecting them.
I know what we'll make sure I do is get your email before I leave today.
And I'll tell you the purpose of my question. I'm trying to see if the, if the group that you've outreach to is narrow.
Yes, yes, I appreciate that.
And if it leaves from one source, it's obviously going to be rather narrow.
Right. So what we've done, we've also, I had a list of, I don't have it here with me, we had a stakeholder list that had included all the major landowners, the institutions in town, the Interfaith Clergy Association, DCR, Napanzit River, a variety, and I create, we created targeted emails to those groups, and I have heard back from some of those.
You want me to run down the whole list?
Sure.
Milton Hospital, Milton Academy, Curry College, Font Bond, St. Mary of the Hills, La Buree College, Milton Residents for the Elderly, Milton Fuller, Milton Housing Authority, Milton Interfaith Clergy, Walliston Golf Club, DCR, Cunningham Park Trustees, Napanzit River Watershed Association, Historic New England, Trustees of the New England Reservation, also Milton Chamber of Commerce, we've actually got a member from that on the board, and various elected officials and town departments. So we covered, I think, as many as we could think of, but.
And again, I'm more concerned with individuals than I am.
Right. We also had media outreach.
Right, and that would, and that, so we, so for MPEG, we put a flyer up regarding, and they've been running that. We also, the Globe, and the, My Town?
Globe, The Times, I think you sent one to the Times, 02186, My Town Matters, Milton Patch, so it's been in print and online newspapers.
It's been in the Milton Times?
It's my understanding that we sent something, yeah.
I think there was an article last week.
That's right.
I think I saw something today, too.
And, okay.
And we have a, and we do have a website, which has been up for some time, and that's miltonmasterplan.org, and it's on there.
And there's a link from the town's website.
And there's a link from the town's website.
It went out, and the schools do an email blast, a newsletter blast, it went out in that.
It went to parents or students at the schools?
Whoever's on the email blast with the list, that they do.
I get everything from Milton High, I get it from Colin, it's, you know.
I don't know if it was Milton High or the schools in general. I don't know who's on that list. We sent, you sent it over to the schools, they confirmed that they're putting it in.
Yeah, and she said she would, she would do it.
So flyers have gone up in various businesses in East Milton and along the businesses in Central Avenue. There's actually, there was an event for the Martin Luther King Celebration, and I know some people passed out flyers at that. There were about 30 flyers that were passed out there. Because it went to the Milton Faith Clergy Association, some ministers may have chosen to put it in their news bulletins and some may not. It's, that's a decision church by church as to how much they do that. There's nothing we can, you know, there's no way we can say, you must put this in your bulletin, but that would be another form of outreach that's sometimes done. So I'm trying to think what else.
Was the library on there?
Libraries should have been on there. I don't know if they had a flyer or not. We relied on the members to distribute flyers, and some of it got back to me in the exact specific places and some didn't, so. So we tried to, and of course, because it was on Milton Cable as well, we tried to think of ways of getting out both electronically and in sort of more traditional methods like flyers and print to as many people as we could. So, short of going door to door, you're never going to be able to get everybody. And then, of course, we asked people that we'd send it to to forward it on to somebody else, and that's where that comment from a friend of mine, who I emailed, you know, a couple of people last night and said, hey! And she said, I've already gotten multiple invitations, I can't come. So we know that it's bouncing around.
And what we will, what we typically do is, from the sign-in from the first public meeting, and then we ask, as they sign up, if we can keep them on our list to, you know, to broaden it, and they will continue to get announcements. And I should say that we don't, we try not to send out too many announcements, because we don't want people to be tired of hearing about it, but we try to do at least once a month, or once a month, and then a reminder that, you know, that the thing is, that it's coming up, so.
You know, the other thing we might want to consider doing is at the registration, asking how they heard about it.
That's a great idea.
And that would be a great way of following up and seeing which, which elements got the most people to come, and then we can focus on that next time.
Is there a, is there a minimum number that'll?
That will be useful?
Yes. I mean, if 10 people show up at this meeting, is it?
You know, I, it's always.
Not that I.
Absolutely, I hear you, I hear you. It's always, it's always useful whenever you have a conversation, you know, outside of the, the people that sit at this table or another planning table. The more, the better when it comes, if they're engaged, is because you want to, because this is visioning and it's not setting recommendations or policy, you really want to get as many people involved as you can. We've been doing that at the forum, we'll be doing that at the forum. We've also, you know, sent things out, or we have a, we have a survey that we do daily or weekly on the, on the website as well, so we're asking questions, are people just going to the website and then answering questions on there? So it's just getting the conversations going in town as many ways as you can. And we certainly, we'd be disappointed with 10.
No, no. Is it, is it possible to ask at the meeting when the people sign up, what precinct they come from?
Um, we can't, we can.
I mean, it might.
We do ask for address, so you can see where the diversity is.
Yeah.
To see if geographically we're catching them, yes.
That's my concern, that it's not going to be a true representative of the.
Yeah.
Grand geography of Milton.
It's an important concern, too, because that's one of our goals, is to try and get a good geographic representation. So if we see that we're missing certain precincts at the first one, then that means we really need to target those precincts for the second one.
Right, yeah.
So it's a very good point.
When you, when you use the term stakeholder interviews, is a stakeholder a citizen of Milton, or is it something in North of Milton?
They don't have to be a stakeholder of, I mean, they don't have to be a resident of Milton, they might be a land manager that doesn't reside. For example, the Napanzit River Watershed Association, we would consider them, just because they're, you know, a manager of an important resource that goes through your town. Generally, they are people who might be involved in either the implementation or are involved in, you know, managing land, because it really comes down to, when you do a master plan, it's really about what you're doing with your land. So we're really targeting people who really need to have some input in that. It includes your business, you know, your business folks and your boards and committees.
So the, whether you retail it to the person you're speaking to, or obviously, you know, the Napanzit River Watershed.
Right, different, whole different.
You don't think of it as a local academy or.
Exactly.
A private landholder.
Yes, they are, yeah. And we, generally, what we want to find out at these stakeholder interviews is what are their issues? What are their plans? What are their hopes? And what are their plans and what are the issues that they see? And you just need to bring those all together, and you'd be surprised to find out how many issues, you know, connect and cross, and that's really the, what we're trying to do in the stakeholder interviews.
Yeah, especially for some of the institutions, they may actually have their own plans that we don't know about, because we don't talk about them.
Yeah.
Yeah, exactly, both Curry and Milton Academy in recent years have been good about coming and telling us, you know, Milton Academy came and made a presentation on their science building, but if they've got more long-range plans, that might affect something else going on in town, this is a chance for us to make contact with them and find out what those are and see how they work into what we're thinking about. Same thing for Curry or any of the other schools, so it's a good chance to reach out to them when we might otherwise not have the opportunity.
And I did hear from them that they said that they would have a liaison at the.
Oh, excellent, that's great.
Will the interviews be on the website or made public in some fashion?
What we generally do, we don't do a word for word, just because it would be nearly impossible for us to do physically, but we generally do a summary of the interviews so that people know what the issues were discussed and what the general outcome, similar to what we produce for the summary with, on the survey, the in-house survey we did. We don't by name say someone said this, but we do, we do a summary.
I mean to, you know.
Yeah, absolutely.
Name of person other than just maybe the.
Right.
You know, the entity they came from.
The entity and what their issues were and, you know, what, absolutely, yeah.
Rather than just see a grand, you know, opinion at the end, I'd like to see some of the individual thoughts.
Where it comes from, absolutely, yeah. And that is, it'll be on the website, but it'll also be within the, generally, it's in the appendix of the report, the final report that we make. Everything that comes out of the public process is part of that appendix, so you can, you know, see the summary survey, you can see the stakeholder interview survey, you'll see, have a summary of the, each one of the forums, along with the actual notes that came out of each of the discussion groups. So we try to give as much background information, so you can see what comes out as the final product, where it's come from. You should see a very direct link from what we got in to what comes out as a final product.
Which is especially important for the visioning process.
Very, very.
We want to be able to trace that back, so.
Very important.
All right.
All right.
Thank you, we'll see you on Saturday.
You're very welcome, I hope you will.
Looking forward to it.
Great, well, thank you for letting us have this update, and I know we'll come to you at least one other time.
Oh, we're looking forward to your updates.
Great.
I think there might be two more times, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Now, we're going to see if we can discuss whether or not we need an associate member. What do you think? I don't think it's the most pressing need in the world.
Are we being asked to vote on it, discuss on it?
No, we're just being asked to discuss it because, because the town government committee has put together the material that was passed out at the last meeting.
Right.
With the request by me that you be prepared to discuss it at this meeting.
Okay.
And I've duly read it, and I think that it's, I don't see a pressing need to having an associate member. I'm not exactly sure how it would work, because if we had an associate member, would the associate member be on call to come in at some point if, or would the associate member be hanging around all the time?
The associate member would have to, as I understand it, attend all the meetings, so that if one of us, for some reason, could not vote on something, they would be able to step in and vote on that. I, I have a colleague at my office who is, she's either an associate planning board member or is on a planning board with other associates, I can't remember if she's a full member or not, but that's an appointed board rather than an elected board, and I don't know the details of how they handle that.
Well, the, if we had an associate member and the member were to be elected, I would suppose that that associate member would say, I've put in my service, and whenever there's a vacancy, would expect to stand up to fill the vacancy.
But if it's a regular.
To be appointed, to be appointed and then be elected.
But if it was a reg, if it was a vacancy because of a regular election, so if somebody just waited to the end of their term and stepped down, then they would presumably have to run for it as anybody else would, so.
Yeah, I agree. But it does seem to me that, yes, Bill.
It actually fills the need of having an extra person there. You would meet with, in this case, you'd have six members sitting there.
Right.
And should one person have to recuse himself, one person be absent, because that person has been to every one of these meetings, they are now eligible to step in. So you would have your fourth vote, should this be a special permit issue. So it wouldn't be a case of having to wait.
Right.
For another person. It would allow somebody to miss multiple meetings, and they might not have to vote, but the board still would have its contingency to vote.
But otherwise, they would, would they be allowed to participate in all the discussions, even without voting?
Absolutely, yeah. They're just like another member, they just don't get to vote all the time.
I think, obviously, I've actually been around. I think, obviously, Alex, you've been around, have quite a bit of experience, and you made a statement a minute ago that you don't see a pressing need. I don't have enough experience to probably say whether there is or isn't. But I'm going to buy into your opinion. With that said, I think it would undermine the elected board to appoint a member. If it isn't a pressing need, then at very least, if it should come and vote, it should be done by an election. If the next election comes up, they can put an associate on the ballot or a number of people who decided they'd like to be an associate.
Right, it would be, in my view, it has to be, an associate member should be elected because putting an appointed person on an elected board who gets to participate in to the same degree as an elected person is is just wrong.
Undermines the whole public.
Yeah, I believe the proposal from the town government study committee was jointly with the planning board and the board of selectmen, right?
Right.
That they, yeah, I think that that becomes problematic for the reasons that you stated. Everybody else is elected, so why would you not?
What does the state law say to the associate member?
What does the state law say?
Yeah, I mean, you're.
They could be elected or appointed.
Yeah.
Either or.
Yeah. It can't be both.
No, I mean, you could, it doesn't have to be.
We'll consider appointing you. Sorry, Bill. It's been a long day.
I just don't think the public, I think the public would be very skeptical of a vote on something that was controversial that became decided by the associate member who was appointed. I would. And I consider myself part of the public as well as a planning board member.
Of course, there would probably be a few letters to the editor at that point.
Yes.
Yes.
Have you researched any other towns, see how they handle this?
I know that that committee has.
Yes.
And I've seen the, I've seen them go by and I don't remember. There's a fair amount that have associate members.
You know, the best thing to do is publicly talk with the town government study committee. I mean, we've seen their report, we're talking among ourselves. I think the best thing to do is to have a conversation with them. And, you know, see, I I know in the past year, we have had some problems, understandably, with Bernie having some family issues. And that just happens to anybody at any time. I don't recall that many problems before that. So, you know, is this a reaction to, on their part, to something that's happened fairly recently that otherwise hasn't been an issue? Do they see a larger need? In which case, you know, we should publicly talk about it with them.
You said they, what do you mean?
The town government study committee, the ones making the recommendation.
Well, but I mean, we are the planning board and we we should have a fairly good feeling whether or not it would be helpful to have someone sitting around the table, participating but not voting.
Well, I understand that. I'm just saying, rather than us discussing it and here and then them discussing it there, maybe we should have an actual conversation.
Well, they did invite us to have a conversation, but it was the night of one of our own meetings.
Right.
So.
So we need to maybe work out.
Well, no, they said that there could be a future meeting. I have no problem with going and meeting with them. I was just testing the waters here. But certainly, I think that we are agreed that if there is an associate member, the associate member needs to be elected. Is that right?
I agree.
I agree.
I mean, I, sometimes I hear, you know, and with all due respect to people who say, what do other towns do? What does the state say? I I think I'm proud to say that other towns should say, how did I do at Milton? Because they're running a great town. So I don't know that we have to always look at other towns. I think we can look within and say, what do we need? What would the public trust? What would be intelligent?
And I think that we should have maybe an alternate member for the selectmen, because they they need one.
We could appoint them to the alternate member.
Appointed by the planning board of the selectmen.
Oh, dear me.
Silly time.
Yeah, really.
Yes and no, it makes a point.
Well, well, we.
We could deputize his chair to go have a chat with the town government study committee and see what they think.
Right. I mean, it might be, it might be a charter change, but we, in any event, we will meet with them and discuss it.
Fair enough.
And I will get get back to them. Now.
Al, it couldn't be just one or two of us or three of us, you know?
It could be one or two or three.
Yeah.
I mean, it doesn't have to be everyone.
Yeah.
But it could be those that are interested in the, and we've posted, so that as many as wanted to go could do it.
They know more about it than we do, I think, because they've been.
They've been doing the research.
They, you know, they've pushed, they've pushed the paper, but they haven't seen the associate member in action anywhere. And they haven't, you know, they don't really understand the dynamics of the planning board meetings. And so, you know, it's like any consultant, they have certain strengths.
They don't have an idea, we don't need them, they always have an idea.
They have certain strengths, but they're, they're not infallible.
Does Mr. Clark give any opinions on this?
No.
Thank you. You're wise.
What else?
Okay, now we have a lawyer I know, Daniel Hill, has sent out a ideas for a medical marijuana bylaw. And I think that we should take a look at this.
Okay.
And and see if we like the idea. See if that we think that this is something we can develop into the, for, to put in for the placeholder.
That the board of selectmen put off?
Yes. And I think that, I mean, I certainly see that there's a lot of stuff in here, which is certainly thought-provoking, if not entirely necessary. But I do think that it it offers what what's needed to to put something together.
So we'll talk about it at our next meeting, after reviewing?
Let's, yeah, I think that we should review it and talk about it at our next meeting. I think the assisted living bylaw that we submitted is, and there's nothing new. Is there, Bill, do you have anything new?
No, I actually had a discussion with the warrant committee, the chair of the warrant committee's subcommittee chair. And we were actually fine, we worked through most of his issues. It was a case of going back through some of the redline versions and trying to figure out how this thing had evolved over time. They were actually fine with that. I actually have a question on the public hearing for the medical marijuana, the assisted living. We're going to have one for the master plan, housing production plan. How do you want to proceed with those public hearings? The housing production plan can be done through the selectmen, unless you want to do it too. The medical marijuana can be done through the selectmen.
It's zoning.
Well, it's zoning, we have to do our own.
So we have to do one too.
It's zoning, too.
They'll do, they'll do theirs at the same time.
I think that, I think that medical marijuana, we're going to push off until probably later in the process. We're going to do the assisted living earlier. We'll do Mr. Sullivan's one earlier. But we've got to put something, we've got to put the medical marijuana thing together before we schedule a hearing.
So could we do the medical marijuana on the 28th and the others on the 14th?
The 28th of what, February?
Yeah.
And the others on the 14th of February?
Yep. We have enough time to get into the papers for the 14th of February? We should do, they go in next week.
But is the, what is the warrant committee press deadline?
It's usually, it's been being pushed back, so it's usually roughly mid-March. But they'll need time after we do our stuff to talk about it.
Which one do you want to do on the 14th?
Assisted living?
The assisted living, I have enough time for that.
Okay.
Well, why don't we just do assisted living on the 14th?
Schedule everything else for the 28th?
And then we'll put.
Because we can start on the 28th.
We may, we may, we may put marijuana on in March.
Well, see, what I'm thinking is if we need more than one night on some of them, if we start them on the 28th, then we have the chance to continue them to another meeting.
I think we have that chance anyhow.
Yeah, but we may run out of time for going to press.
We may run out of time for going to press, but it won't be the first time. And that's the the nice thing about those various, I know you're a warrant committee, ex-warrant committee chairman, but the wonderful thing is.
I saw the expression on my face.
Yellow, pink, blue sheets, take out your yellow sheet. I mean, we'll do the best we can, but.
I think the medical marijuana is going to be, I think there'll be issues with it because of the state not coming out with its rules until May 1st.
Yes.
So when they come out on May 1st, and our town meeting is May 6th, we're creating something in anticipation of something, we have no idea what it says.
Right.
It, they're, the state's version, they contain everything that Mr. Hills has in here. We don't know. We're trying to guess, pre-guess what the State Department of Public Health is going to come up with.
Well, exactly. This is why we look forward to your report on what they're going to come up with. We want you to call up some of your friends.
Me and my big mom.
Look, we're going to do the best we can with it.
I understand that.
It may not be perfect. But we're going to try and anticipate what, we're going to look at the law. We're going to see what the regulations are supposed to cover. And we're going to do the best we can without the regulations in place.
They have, they've given you no guidance.
Right.
So you don't know what those setbacks are. You don't know what those amounts are.
No, but we can, we still can, we still can.
Guess and try to go hard.
We can work on it, we can, it's a, it's a zoning challenge.
The Citizens Planner Training Collaborative, which is on March 16th, I think, this year, whatever that Saturday is, is holding a session on medical marijuana, I'm signing up for that in addition to the others.
Saturday, March 16th.
Saturday, March 16th. I just gave the paperwork to Gene this evening.
And I just sent you the link this evening.
Well, good. All right, so that's, we will, you know, we'll see what we can do here. But we're certainly not going to hear it at the very least until the March meeting.
Okay, so then do the assisted living on the 28th and everything else start the first meeting on March.
You're talking about creating some kind of zoning, right?
Right.
I can't imagine the zone, the state is going to address the zoning very strictly. I mean.
We don't, we don't know, but we're going to.
State tell you where to put it?
We're going to see what, we're going to see.
More health stuff that we're waiting for.
We're going to see what the state does do. But certainly, the law is the law and it says that you can have these clinics. And if you don't have zoning in place, presumably, even if there are no state regulations.
Guess what street we're going to?
Well, that's, that's my point. What, the state's not going to say to you, the state may say, you know, I know you're anticipating, but the state may say that you, you know.
Well, you're saying we we should be proactive.
Yeah.
Okay, I agree with you.
Absolutely.
I agree with you.
That's why we're bringing this up.
Well, I mean, I thought you were saying the opposite.
That's why you don't waste your time. You're going to read through this and we're going to.
I understood you then. I thought what Phil was saying was, don't waste your time until you hear from the state.
Oh, no. He just.
I actually said that we should have used the adult entertainment zoning as the boilerplate. And Alex's comment is, let's start at the beginning and go here.
Well, let's, let's read what's in this. I mean, if we use that as a boilerplate, you still hang stuff all over it. It's like a Christmas tree. A boilerplate is like a Christmas tree. And then you hang stuff on it and you get a beautiful work.
That is an interesting metaphor. I'll remember that.
Can you use that tomorrow?
I'm going to try.
All right, now, what else do we have? We have Mr. Sullivan's, we have, oh, we have that interesting, the interesting article on the historical commission has submitted about extra parking for preservation of the Swift Hat Box Building. And we should take a look at that. I think that it's, it's interesting.
Where is the Swift Hat Box?
It's in, it's right next to the Verizon Building, it's that little red building. And the owner is always talking about tearing it down. But this would reward him for preserving it by giving him credit for a number of parking spaces. And my own thought is that three should be plenty. But the historical commission has said three to six. And I think that may be somewhat excessive, but.
It's what, 1715, something like that? It's one of the last industrial buildings, I mean, other than the chocolate factory.
I don't know, but I know that the owner has filed for a demolition permit for the building again. I know it's going before the, it's going before the historic commission, actually, the ads in today's paper.
We're just backing up a little bit, the intention of crediting with more parking spaces is so that he can.
It's a business building. If he gets credit for three parking spaces, it means he can have.
More business in the building.
How many square feet, 250, that's 700, it's worth 750 feet of business area.
Which might be enough to encourage.
The parking space he has today limits his business.
If you allow it between the white building in back and the red building, combining them, which the zoning does, you, you can make an interesting business development. And the question is, how much credit should you get? And they say three to six, and I sort of think three may be plenty. But we'll, we'll consider this on the, I think, the 28th.
Okay, that's good.
Or we could consider, we could do this one with the.
Assisted living?
With the assisted living. It might be a good thing to do with the assisted living on the 14th, Bill. What do you think?
I'd actually like to ask Mr. Sullivan, because I know he's here, what the date of the, of the hearing with the historic commission is. Because he filed for the demolition permit for the project. I have a letter dated January 6th from Mr. Roberts, the owner of the building, to Steve O'Donnell, Chair of the Milton Historical Commission. This is in, this is in response to an application filed for demolition permit to the inspectional services. The reason I'm seeking the permit is due to the determination that the restoration and use of the building is uneconomic, given the acquisition and construction cost and what the market value of the property will be when completed. And I know that there's a hearing coming up with the historic commission, I just don't remember the date.
Well, are you suggesting the 28th, then?
What I'm saying is it may be a moot point if they want to tear the building down.
Yeah, but they'll put a demolition delay on it, so that's six months.
Well, then, let's do it on the 14th. Let's do it on the 14th and have them in here to talk about it.
Yeah, I just want to make one point, I have this opportunity on that demolition permit. And Mr. Roberts actually would prefer to save the building. He'd prefer to save it at a different location. He believes Worf Street, there's some locations down along Worf Street that would be appropriate for the building. And he also may assist in anticipating and moving the building and helping to raise funds to renovate it for, use for either the park department or maybe the Milton Historical Commission or a combination of both. And he preferred to create a different building at 98 and 102 Adams Street that he thinks would be very beneficial to the Milton Village. He doesn't really have any plans yet, but he's prepared to develop plans and bring them in so that the board could see them.
Well, I've been willing to have the building. Well, I think being willing to have the building moved someplace is sort of like what happened with Roger Greg's house.
Well, the Suffolk Rizov House got moved and seems to be fine.
It did. It did. Yes.
The building that's attached, Paul, what's the outcome of the building that's there? The white building?
Well, originally had a plan that didn't go very far for different reasons. We developed a plan for both buildings back, I don't know, it's four or five years ago, I guess, before 36 Central. And what I think Mr. Roberts' intent is eventually is if he worked out and was able to move the building, everybody was on board for that, and that worked out fine. And we developed new plans for that corner there. And we do a mixed-use building where it'd be... The first... There'll be a new building where the red building is now, the 98 Adams building is. It would be attached... The buildings would look like two buildings, but even though they're going to be attached, you put a totally new facade and roof on the white building, the two family that's there, and create a whole new building, a very historic-looking building, and have four or five residential units, depending on the parking and all the issues that need to be resolved. And then some commercial on the first floor and maybe in the basement and the walkout on the side where the red building is now. So it could be a win-win for everybody, I think, you know?
Did you say Mr. Roberts is going to fund the movement of this building?
He said he might participate, depending on how the whole thing would work out.
He'd participate?
Yes. Yeah. I've moved a building before. We've already got an idea.
That's not my question. I know I could do that. I'm asking who's going to pay for it.
Yeah, it actually... If it was Worf Street, it wouldn't be that bad to move that building.
Again, I'm not worrying about the sum. I'm worried about who's going to pay for it.
Well, it'd be a combination of fundraising, and he may participate too.
All right.
Save your demolition.
This...
Well, he had a demolition permit before and he didn't rip the building down.
Well, I mean, ripping it down is...
No, no, and what I'm saying, that'd be a lot cheaper for him to have somebody else pay to move the building than pay to demolish it.
No, that's not his reasoning. He had a demolition permit in hand at one point, and he didn't demolish the building when he had the opportunity to do it.
I know the Historic Commission's been interested in seeing this building preserved, so...
Yeah, we've actually exchanged some emails, spoke to Steve a little bit. I missed a meeting. It was a misunderstanding tonight. The meeting was to take place, but Mr. Roberts, no rush to rip the building down. We anticipate this would start a conversation with the Milton Historic Commission, the end of town, and find a solution that works for everybody.
Okay.
Okay, so we're going to put it... Now, we've gone back to the 28th for this.
Okay.
We... You know, tearing down the building is sort of like cutting down the tree. It's not a grave...
Can I just say one more time? When this first came up, I mainly talked to Meredith Hall. I didn't have Steve's number. And I sent her an email. I told her right after we filed for it that Mr. Roberts was in no rush, doesn't intend to rip the building down, that he wants to work with the commission and others in the town and find a better location for it. He thinks it's a better situation if it's moved. And Worf Street, we think, has some possibilities down there.
Okay.
Even if the permit was issued, he had a permit in 2006. He could have ripped the building down. He didn't rip it down. So he's not going to rip it down now. He's in no rush to tear the building down. And just...
Okay, and that's the smart thing to do, is to see what you can do before you do something that you can't reverse.
Right.
It'd be interesting to have a little bit more activity down on Worf Street, so...
Yeah, there's a couple good squads that could fit down there. Maybe the park department could use, you know, rip their programs down there, and there's a lot of possibilities for the building.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, well, I'm glad you were here to give us that report. I don't think that... We discussed his zoning for the overlay before, and we're going to just put that out for the hearing on the 28th.
Yep.
I just say one quick thing about that. I did reserve a room at the Milton Public Library, Keyes Community Room, for the 13th. And I've sent out notices to just about everyone.
For the 13th?
Yes.
Well, okay, so this is the 28th. Makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
For what? For Paul?
For the 591 Boll Avenue. To discuss the possibilities, you know?
Thank you.
Touchdown zoning.
Okay, I can't think of any other zoning floating around out there, but if it's there, put it on for the 28th, Bill.
All right.
Housing production plans?
The housing production plan, yes.
So at our last meeting, you asked me to look for some sample RFPs.
Yeah.
And I found three, which I sent over to Bill, but given his schedule this week, I'm sure he didn't have a chance to send them out to you. So we'll get those out to you in the next week, so you can have a look. But basically, there's one that was just a few pages long, seven or eight, and then we had a couple that were up to 30. So I haven't weeded... I haven't waded through all of them myself yet. But they look very interesting. I look forward to talking with you guys about them. Yep, we've got one from the town of Hanover, one from Wakefield, and a town of Easton. So...
Right.
Three different ones. Should give us some information that we can use. And I also have three sample master plan RFPs, which I've not sent to Bill, but I can send to him. We can send them all around at the same time.
Bill, it's time for your report.
Can I ask a question on that first?
Certainly.
Do they have associated amounts of money with those?
I haven't gone through all of them yet, so I think some may and some may not.
Okay.
It's been a long week.
It seems to be the question that I'm getting from the selectmen, from the warrant committee.
Well, Bron Walker gave us their estimate of it. Remember that letter that they gave us in December?
I know. But I did sit in front of the warrant committee last night, and Alex was there, too. We took a beating for coming up with numbers, so...
I have numbers.
I know you do. That's what we did. We said Emily has the numbers.
And I did volunteer that she would show up on the 9th of February.
Right.
Which I stated...
With the numbers.
Yes.
In hand.
I will have numbers in hand.
I did volunteer her for that, yes. Okay, my stuff. I've been reviewing several wireless communication projects. We've got Mr. Duffy. We have a meeting on the 28th.
Thank you.
That's a Monday.
That's good for you.
Dealing with some legal issues with the selectmen's office, just providing information back and forth to them, working on some rink management issues, working on the management plan for down there. The medical marijuana with the Board of Health agent, affordable housing. The two units at 36 Central, the applications for those two units are out right now. They're available at the library, the... Down at Milton Housing Authority, here at Town Hall, in the selectmen's office. There's some up in the lobby. And there's some in the planning department. The deadline for application for those two units is February 25th. If people are interested, I do suggest you get that application packet. It's very simplistic. Everything is in there, everything you need to know. I do know that they're having a walkthrough of those two units on January 27th, and I don't know what time. I'd suggest calling the Milton Housing Authority. They will have that date.
On January 27th on Sunday?
Yep. Yes. I didn't know when 27th was, but yes.
Will the communication, Bill, give that date again? The communication?
Yours, the 28th.
28th of what?
28th of January.
Okay. Okay, thank you. That's set now.
That's set.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
And it's one thing, so it'll be in and out.
Okay.
The demo permit for 98 Adams and the Historic Commission hearing. The application, for some reason, is in the planning office. That's what the Historic Commission posted, so we have that information. Dealing with the warrant committee issues. I'm trying to write the scope for the East Milton project, the East Milton Parking Project. Trying to work on the scope for the MassWorks Grant, which is connecting Milton Village and Central Ave Business District. And we're going to... We've been meeting to have that coordinated with 36 Central. I mean, 36 Elliott. Been dealing with the home project. Actually, that home up on Walcott is a five-bedroom house for severely handicapped people. I think you may have seen the article in the paper last week. It counts as five affordable housing units on our subsidized housing inventory list. The house is ready... Is due to have... Be ready for occupancy the middle of March, so things are flying up there. They're going to have a dedication of that building with HUD beginning of April. I think it's April 4th. HUD's confirming those dates right now.
Who's doing it? The Housing Authority?
No, that's Work Inc.
Okay.
This board saw Work Inc. for a A&R.
Right.
On 47 Walcott.
Yeah.
And that's the only permit that it had to go through because of the type of house it is. It's exempt from anything else under Section 3 of Chapter 48.
Brand-new house?
Brand-new house. Five bedrooms. Every person in there is wheelchair-bound. There is a 24-hour staff person. The people all work in the Work Inc. program, so they all get up and go to work every day. This is their independent living. Wind project is still hurry-up-and-wait.
The what?
The wind project.
Oh, okay, thanks.
And then I'll have for you on the 14th an A&R for the... This is the extra piece of land from the Hillside Street project that is being... This board signed the denial, and the appeal is forthcoming, but in anticipation of that, they filed a approval not required for the extra piece of land, which will be before you on the 14th. And that's it.
Okay, well, thank you for your report. And is there any other business that anyone thinks should be brought before the board? If not...
Not at this time, except to say I hope to see you all at the public forum on Saturday, or if you can't make it, in February.
February 26, 6:30 to 9:30, Cunningham.
26.
All right. But the 14th here upstairs somewhere.
I will attempt to make it upstairs.
Okay. So I will entertain a motion to adjourn. I have the motion. I have a second. All in favor? Aye.
We are.